In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session and regular meeting, the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this work session and regular meeting would take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 28, 2023.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilwoman Sheba Uden. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the public for which it's...
Let us take the next few moments of silence to each seek in our own way whatever sources of inspiration will grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Mayor Krupp, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Aaron Barrison?
Here.
Councilwoman Frances Hall?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yeah.
Councilmember Batasna?
Present.
Councilwoman Pruitt? Councilwoman Adine?
Here.
Councilman Vasanella? Councilman White?
Here.
Item number five on the agenda, copies of the agenda are there near the clerk. On private commendations and proclamations, we have none. Item six is public discussion. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Mr. Mayor, before we do, can I make an amendment to the agenda? I move we take item 15L, the Resolution 23459, to support Assembly Bill A4536 and Senate Bill S304 to establish minimum registered professional nursing standards to this spot on the agenda.
Would prefer that it be after public discussion because people may want to discuss it and persuade us to vote one way or another.
Oh, amend my motion to insert it at 6.5 after public discussion.
You have a second on the motion?
Second.
Good one. Would you then second it all in favor of preventing the agenda as above? Say aye.
Aye.
否, say nay. Motion is passed. So item number six is public discussion. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
移到
I can do it.
Move then second it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
否, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public for anyone wishing to speak on matters related to government. You are limited to five minutes, may only speak once. No yielding of time. Please state your name and address when you come up. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Kramer, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Arthamun Singh, 30 Cartier Drive, Franklin Park. I speak before you today to shine a light on a matter of great concern within our community. On October 31, 2023, following an argument between several high school age boys at a private residence, a 17-year-old sick boy of my faith was followed to a second location and assaulted by a parent of one of his schoolmates. Per eyewitnesses, this adult male aggressively put his hands on the young man and threatened further violence with a metal baseball bat. Moreover, in the course of the altercation, anti-sick bias language was used against this sick boy. Despite a full investigation by our Franklin Township Police Department, which included eyewitness interviews and a video recording, and they're referring to the case as one of simple assault and bias intimidation, the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office has refused to bring any charges against the adult male. And just to be clear, I want to emphasize that this was not merely a case of boys being boys, but an instance of an adult, a parent, no less, threatening and physically harming a child. The family of the sick boy who faced this unacceptable conduct has asked that we work to maintain his privacy, given that he is a minor. They are also working with the Sick Coalition, a national civil rights organization, to engage the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office. In the days ahead, the sick members of our community will also be mobilizing to demand that appropriate action and charges are brought. I invite you all to join us in calling for this case, to move through the justice system, because we all know that our community is strongest when we stand with one for one another. No community will stand for an attack for one of its own, much less a youth with a bright future ahead of them. I am confident that together we can right this wrong, and I thank you for your consideration and your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Wassim Firdos at 269 Bennett Lane in Somerset. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have two requests from you tonight. As you know, recent events in the Middle East have caused a lot of fear and anxiety around the world and in our community, particularly in the Jewish and Muslim communities. I'm not here to debate the historical perspectives or the political and, you know, and other narratives. I think for the most part, we just need to agree to disagree on the narratives and move ahead to finding a solution to end the suffering and the humanitarian crisis. I ask you to please pass a resolution, pass a peace resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. That's the first request. And my second request is to see if the council can encourage our other community leaders. You guys are great and we appreciate that. But there are some religious and other leaders in the community, and if we could encourage them to post blogs and sermons and speeches that help heal the divide rather than than blogs that dehumanize the other side, I think that would be great. I think we need to to build bridges rather than breaking the ones we already have. So to that end, I think it's important if the council, especially Franklin, has to remain as a model for a diverse community living in peace and understanding together. I think it's really important that we combat the Islamophobia and the antisemitism that's growing everywhere and also within our community. There are leaders who post blogs that serve no purpose other than to just dehumanize the group. And so I'm hoping that you guys can serve as role models by passing this resolution and so that our other leaders too can find ways to bridge the differences rather than to post things that just further the standings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen, women. My name is Mujibul Rahman. I live in 1119 Woodfield Court, Franklin Township. I'm here again to talk about what's happening in the world. I strongly recommend, urge the township council to issue a ceasefire resolution. Knowing our own Mr. Sami Shabban losing many, many members of his family in one night or one morning, it was very heartbreaking to see. A bloodshed on both sides. Human life is more valuable than anything else. We have to respect our own people, humanity, no matter what religion. We follow what faith we believe in. But this is very, very important that we stand for right and stand for justice. So I strongly recommend council to issue a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Meher Rafiq, spelled M-E-H-E-R, last name R-A-F-I-Q, address 13 Spring Street in Somerset, NJ. Respected Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. So I want to share a quick story with you. Just indulge with me for a few minutes. I'm an immigrant, product of New York City, raised in the Bronx. In high school, I entered an essay writing competition. It was around how to, it was sponsored and judged by the New York City council members. So the topic was how can a community feel safe around the gang violence that was happening, which if anybody has seen West Side Story, you kind of get the picture. So the essay topic, I had, which I'll share with you in a minute. So the gang-related issues are primarily based on ethnicity and territorial, right? Who came to the block first? Who was on the street? And so forth. So the result is the community that lived in these gang-related areas had to deal with fears. So I had a fear. The violence wasn't happening in the neighborhood I was living, but the fear was there. So the fear was then, and I live in fear now. So let me just share with you the fear I have. I fear the anti-Muslim and the anti-Arab rhetoric and the Islamophobia that is growing here at home. I fear of the attacks. I fear of the growing hate, fear of the going out and experiencing hateful glares because what I'm wearing as a Muslim. I fear of the freedom of my speech. I fear of attending my house of worship. I fear of losing the unity and the respect we have in our own town of each other. I fear of the pain for the community for the community being hurt, fear of losing loved ones here. I fear of continued verbal and visual attacks of the Muslims in the social media posts, especially by people in town that I know. To go back to my essay, which by the way, did win the first prize, a mere $100, which was a lot of money for the teenager back then, my title of the essay was Be a Peacemaker, as suggested by my dad, who is an amazing peacemaker. And that is what I'm asking of our council, to be the peace leaders. I strongly believe the tipping point of combating Islamophobia and the antisemitism, and for that matter, hate towards any ethnic group is through peacebuilding. And to accelerate the process, I appeal to this council to establish a peace and a humanitarian resolution to include the following points. Establish a committee. Let's call it a Committee for Peace for now. Establish peace education in our schools. Establish a unit and support for the protection of the Muslim community and the local businesses. Establish a culture of peace sustainability. Employ the leaders of Franklin Township, inclusive of the council and the committing members, house of worship leaders, interfaith dialogue leaders, local journalists, and that they do not spew Islamophobia-related rights. Not to post discriminatory cartoons which clearly imply a Muslim, an Arab or Muslim country's flag implying terrorist. Call on all Franklin Township leaders to proactively voice and support in stopping hate, speech, and gestures. Call to take action against hate crimes. To know that the support for Palestine does not equate does not equate to antisemitism. Interestingly, the root word, Semitic itself means both, the Hebrew language and the Arabic language. And lastly, a call, a faction to a ceasefire of the bombings over the land of Gaza. Peacemaking needs to be in an active, dynamic state always. Thank you very much.
Hello, Kiki Anastasikos, 3204 Anclave Circle in Canal Walk, and I would like to second the previous comments with regards to establishing an interfaith dialogue in our township in order to promote deep understanding between the various cultures and religions, and also anything that this esteemed council can do to promote peace in the Palestine between Gaza and Israel, and to promote, encourage all parties to, towards a permanent ceasefire for the benefit of both, for women and children and innocent people on both sides would be more than desirable. It's unfortunate that we have to deal with such humanitarian issues, and some things just don't change for so many years, but hope is always there, and I believe that eventually the parties will come to a peaceful solution. I also personally would like to extend my personal support for the nurses that are here today. I think that they are in the forefront of our battle when it comes to any kind of epidemic, just like COVID. We know they gave 250% of themselves. They put their lives in danger. And of course, I have a big concern about the state of the health coverage and the amount of help that individuals get when they go to a hospital, either because of a man-made catastrophe, or an environmental catastrophe, or an epidemic of any sort. And finally, I have two updates that I would like to request. One is an update on the traffic study, if at all possible. And the second is based on the agenda. I see there are two ordinances, and I want to congratulate this council on pursuing the purchase of more open space. I would just, I would like to ask, what are the criteria? If someone who's here, I didn't have a chance to go to the open space committee, but if someone can explain to us what are the criteria for selecting certain parcels of land within Franklin Township to preserve as open space, and what those criteria are. In other words, how is, how is a parcel of land chosen to be purchased as open space? And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and Franklin residents. My name is Derek J. Smith. I live at 30 Vermont in Franklin Park. I'm the proud executive director of the Franklin Food Bank, where we have an incredible staff of 16, over 300 volunteers, and we are here to serve Franklin. We've been doing it for the last 50 years, and we do it because we're extremely passionate and dedicated to eradicating food insecurity right here in Franklin. We are in year two of our strategic plan. Our strategic plan has six goals. First goal is to recruit and manage and develop and retain the best talent available. Second is to raise enough funds to be able to continue to serve this town the way we have for the last 50 years. The third is to make sure that we are well aware of the needs of our clients right here in Franklin Township. The fourth goal is to be able to meet our clients where they are. The fifth is to ensure that nutrition is woven through the fabric of all that we do, and the sixth is to ensure that we have the infrastructure to continue to do this special work. What we're experiencing right now here in Franklin, folks, is pretty serious. Our numbers are off the charts. This time last year, we saw somewhere around 11,000 or 12,000 visits to our food pantry. We are now closer to 17,000 visits to our food pantry. It is a combination of an economy that is making it extremely difficult for those with limited resources to find access to food, and housing, and healthcare, and jobs. So you marry that with the reality of a food bank that is doing a better job marketing and promoting the work that we do, and what we have now are at least 100 families coming to our doors each and every day asking for help. We're very proud of our work. Some of you who know the Franklin Food Bank have heard me call it a particular name for the last year and a half. Take your favorite Trader Joe's and your favorite Bodega, and you bring them together, you get Bodega Joe's. And that's the Franklin Food Bank. Quality of food, quantity of food, variety of food, incredible energy. Folks know that when they come to the Franklin Food Bank, they're going to be served with the utmost dignity and respect. There are four programs that we run. We have our grocery store that's open five days a week, including evenings and weekends. We have a backpack program that we're running with Hillcrest and Elizabeth Avenue. We have a program called Community Distribution. We're right here at the Community Relations Bureau, first Wednesday of every month, including next Wednesday, we have food out there for families, not only in Franklin, but also families in the neighboring communities. And we have a program called Beyond Borders, where during the pandemic, we did such a good job sourcing food that many soup kitchens and pantries came to the Franklin Food Bank looking for food, and we welcomed them with open arms. And now we have a program called Beyond Borders, where we support another 42 agencies across Franklin Township and beyond. We also have wraparound services that we're offering to our clients, because when our clients come to our door and say, hey, you're a trusted resource in the community, we're here for food, but we also need help navigating SNAP benefits, or we also need help dealing with cancer screenings. We are not the organization to turn people away. We're the organization to figure it out, to build bridges. So we have SNAP program benefits that we offer clients once a month. We have a partnership with Rutgers where we have a mobile cancer screening unit that comes once a month. We have a nutrition program that we run for our clients once a month. In order for us to do this work, we need to continue to have these partnerships. We have an amazing partnership with Fisk. Somebody mentioned Sammy a moment ago. Sammy brought together this cross-functional, cross-industry group of folks that are working hard to address food insecurity and safety right here in Franklin. We will continue to partner with social service agencies, and corporations, and houses of worship to ensure that we can support folks right here in Franklin. But folks, the situation is real. We need more support to be able to feed people here in Franklin. The amount of folks that are showing up at our door every day that told us a week ago, or a month ago, or a year ago, they were supporting the Franklin Food Bank through donations, but now they're at the food bank asking for food. And we're not going to turn anybody away. But we need more support. The support comes in the form of food donation, the support comes in the form of volunteering, and the support also comes in the form of money. We need you to continue to support the Franklin Food Bank. We're bursting at the seams. Our location is too small to serve the amount of people that we need to support right here in Franklin. We need a larger building. We need financial support to make sure that we can help our neighbors right here in Franklin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Frank Resta, 322 Cedar Grove Lane. I'm here tonight to ask for your help in the only unsolved murder in Franklin Township. This is back, going back 1982, off Eastern Avenue, and it was a 15-year-old girl raped and murdered. It's the only unsolved one in Franklin Township. So a collaborative effort has gotten it to $9,000 reward. I'm asking the council to put it into your monthly newsletter, and basically information leading to the arrest conviction of responsible person for the murder of Sharon Thor. I'm going to pass these out and hope for your support. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christian Kane, and I'm a nurse and resident of East Brunswick. Today's day 117 of the nurses' strike, and Robert Wood Johnson has spent $120 million on strikebreakers instead of agreeing to minimum staffing ratios. We're still seeking a fair contract that ensures safe and sustainable conditions that we as nurses need to achieve high-quality care our communities deserve. While Robert Wood Johnson continues to choose profits over patients, we as members of this community are here to ask you as leaders here in Franklin to pass the resolution in support of Bill A4536/ S304, which would establish minimum staffing standards for nurses in New Jersey. In a video statement made by hospital president Allen Lee on August 6, he claims that our staffing levels already exceed what is outlined in this legislation. The truth is that while Robert Wood Johnson's policies and guidelines do exceed this legislation, they frequently fail to meet their own standards. In the same video, associate CMO Anthony Altobelli admits that, quote, "If we do not have enough nurses, we cannot deliver the complex, high-acuity care that our institution is known for." Incidentally, this hospital, the hospital's leapfrog grade has slipped from an A to a B this past year. This independent advocacy group goes on to show that it's not just Robert Wood Johnson. There has been a significant increase in healthcare-associated infections, a decline in patient experience, and worsened hospital safety across the state. New Jersey has dropped from the number one ranking to 13th. This is the result of fighting against evidence-based legislation for the past 20 years. The need for explicit nurse-to-patient ratios is to ensure staffing minimums. When acting as charge nurses, we create staffing assignments for the oncoming shift. Our current standards do not account for changes in patient census over the course of a shift. My colleagues and I can attest that we have frequently needed to beg the nursing office for additional staff. They will frequently staff us at our current census, completely disregarding that we will have admissions from scheduled OR cases. When confronted about this, supervisors have said to me that staffing is decided at 5:00 AM and not at 12:00 PM. A nurse coming in may start out with six patients, discharge two, and then admit two more. They will have had eight patients that day that all require their own assessments, education, and nursing care. All of these things must be performed and documented accurately at all times. One of our union siblings put it best when she compared nursing to juggling objects while walking a tightrope. Some of them are heavier than others, and as you add more of them, the chances of dropping one increases. On days that I have had an unsafe assignment, it is a daunting task to do everything while walking that tightrope. We are simply not provided the tools that we need to succeed on a regular basis. Feeling like you failed to provide safe and dignified care despite going above and beyond is crushing. When a unit is poorly staffed, achieving safety comes at the cost of human dignity. Nurses sacrifice their own dignity on a daily basis by skipping breaks and staying late, patients laying in dirty beds, waiting for medications, or even to be fed or paying for it too. Burnout isn't a strong enough word. These shifts cause us moral injuries. If all of this weren't enough, we have to worry about making a mistake due to circumstances beyond our control and being convicted of homicide, as Redonda Vaught was last year. Tennessee Bureau of Investigation testified that the medical center itself had, quote, "A heavy burden of responsibility," yet the nurse was the only one punished. Under the current system, hospitals get to absolve themselves of their responsibility to ensure safety while getting reimbursed for delivering substandard care. That is why we are here to urge you to pass this resolution. By doing so, you will be empowering nurses, patients, and the New Jersey Department of Health to secure the future of quality healthcare in New Jersey. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erica. I'm a resident at 3 Wool Run Road. I'm also one of the nurses, the 1,700 nurses who are currently on strike. I want to say thank you for putting the resolution on your agenda, and I hope that you guys could pass it. There's been a lot of questions that I've gotten from community members, residents, as to why this safe staffing bill is important. Don't we already have a nurse shortage? How is this going to help? Well, the bill will help. Not only there's a nurse shortage, because there is a nurse retention problem. There is a lot of nurses who did not activate their license or renew it because of the dangerous situations they're being placed every day when they go to work. This is not just at Robert Wood. It is all throughout New Jersey. Nurses are getting burned out. Nurses, we feel that we haven't, we don't do enough for our patients. And we feel that if these bills get passed, then it will definitely help with the nurse retention issue that we have, and more nurses will be willing to come back to the bedside. So I hope to hear what you guys want to, if you pass it, but thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Samina Satar. I live at 18 Barbary Court, Franklin Township. I am a Bangladeshi American, but my husband is a Palestinian-American. We have two sons. We've been living in the township for over a decade. I fear for them. I fear for my husband. I fear for myself as a visible Muslim who goes around... I fear for myself as a visible Muslim who goes around, I go to work, I go to school. I don't know if everyone here knows, but on November twenty-fifth, three Palestinian-American college students were shot in what seems to be a hate crime because of what they were wearing, how they were dressed, and how they were speaking. And this brings fear. There have been other incidents as well of Islamophobia. In Chicago, a six-year-old was stabbed to death because he was Muslim. So I think it's very important what our leaders, what messages they send, and how they portray the issues and the current events. And so I ask you to please consider passing a resolution for a ceasefire and a peace resolution for peace in the Middle East, for peace in the U.S., and encouraging people of different faiths to work together. I've been doing interfaith work since I was a college student, and I know that there are many more commonalities between peoples of different faiths than there are differences. And I, you know, I maintain hope that we can live as one community, even, you know, appreciating the differences and the diversity among us. I also want to ask you to please give the nurses everything they ask for because they save lives.
Good evening. My name is Sabah one forty-six Emerson Road, Somerset. Issues are growing every day that we have to worry about. As someone who has been at Robert Wood Johnson Hospital five times in past twelve, thirteen years, I have found the most important job at the hospital is done by nurses with great integrity, with caring and loving, without showing the stress that they are under. It's incredible how the care that I have received and what I have seen in them. And the short staffing is a big issue for them, as everybody said. And I think I'm really grateful and thank you for picking up this resolution, and hopefully everybody is going to support it. The other concern that I have as a longtime activist for peace and justice and against war, and having taken part of a period of nonviolence resistance, I have been totally depressed by the war going in Palestine, Israel. And I agree with everything that everybody said. The only thing I want to say, we need to, not only, I would beg you to pass a resolution for ceasefire and peace and ending this crazy reactionary war that is going on. The life on both sides have been sacrificed, but it's very hard. And I have been to both Israel and Palestine, and I know what has gone on before. Nothing happened on Seventh. And what happened in Seven by Hamas was genocidal. It was very painful. But what has happened after that is as bad as that one and more. And we shouldn't fall into this crazy media that doesn't give us information, it doesn't do their own jobs, that have been, the media has been in our constitution. The only non-government organization that is in the constitution is media. And what they are doing, they are not giving us all the information that we need to have. But I know with the consciousness, conscious that this group, you know, this township has, we are doing everything we can to first protect all of our people here, Jewish, Muslim, and anybody else, and as atheists. I support all of them and would stand up for everybody to be, their right to be protected. And have the resolution on ceasefire and peace now. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Debbie Stewart, two Farrington Plaza. It's kind of hard to reel in from the serious issues we have here tonight with the nurses and the Middle East there. But anyway, I'm going to ask a question. The health and wellness report that was supposed to be presented tonight, is there any way that residents can get a copy of that, or do we have to wait for it to be presented at a future meeting? And my other question that many of my neighbors would like to know, what is the status of the various lawsuits that have been brought against the township, primarily with the warehouses, and in particular benign with the noise, stormwater? I'm sure you can't get into detail with that, but is there a way for residents to find out what is going on? How would we? We read an article in the paper this week that there was a lawsuit, but prior to that, we really didn't know that there was a new lawsuit. So how does a resident get this information on their own? I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Robert Cohen, two twenty Osborne Court, Somerset, New Jersey. There are several reasons which prompted me to come here today. I believe the primary function of government is to protect public safety. And that's not just law and order issues, but also public health issues. And we have dire conditions at Robert Wood Johnson Hospital that I believe prompts action and prompts councils around the state to encourage the passage of the legis, of the bill pending in both houses of the legislature. Secondly, I was reading a report that there are now, on average, at Robert Wood Johnson, nine nurses, I'm sorry, one nurse per nine patients in the emergency room. The recommended average for the emergency room is one nurse per six patients. And there are reports of patients in the emergency room sitting in their own urine for several hours. Now, normally speaking, I don't believe government should get involved in labor issues. The market should come to a meeting of the minds, but when it comes to public safety and it's a dire situation, we must get involved. Now, the other thing that prompted me to come here is, I don't think Robert Wood Johnson has been acting in good faith. And why do I say that? Well, normally speaking, after you've been a nurse for ninety days, you're allowed to be admitted into the union. I've heard many reports of nurses being terminated right close to that ninety-day benchmark. Now, given our severe shortage of nurses, and it's going to be even much more severe in the future, that is not acceptable at all. The other thing why I don't think they're acting in public safety is the amount of money they spend on temporary nurses does not make the argument that they can't afford to pay what the nurses request logical. They're doing it, in my opinion, for issues that are not logical and not in good faith. I thank you, everyone, for listening to me, and hope you'll all vote your conscience.
Good evening. Brooklyn, twenty-five Spring Street. First off, I support the nurse resolution. Coming over here, I thought about it, and some of my most difficult decisions in life have been inside hospitals, and those are things that I just take with me. And if you have to see that in day in and day out, they need their support. So, Eastern Avenue, there's a discussion, there's an open discussion about suggestions for Eastern Avenue. Rumor has it you're some sort of traffic expert. I have opinions on Eastern Avenue, but, that was a joke, Bob. Okay. I have opinions about Eastern Avenue, but I'm not sure any of them are really valid. And my question to you is, what are two or three things that people should focus on? Because I'm not sure that road really, it has issues, but I'm wondering how much are really worth discussing? Well, you know, obviously, the interchange of two eighty-seven needs, you know, that, anything can be better than that, but the whole road in itself, I'm not really sure what is valid. Warehouses. People talk about the view of them and the, you know, and the traffic and all that, but I have not witnessed a conversation about the math. If you have, like, there's two warehouses in Veronica, there's another one over by Schoolhouse, how much do those add to the tax base? Like, in real dollars? Is there a way to have that discussion? Or you can sit there and say, well, this is five million dollars to the tax base. If you don't want it, that five million goes away, whatever. Is there any way to speak to that mathematically? And then last but not least, last week, I took a hundred and sixty-five mile bike ride from Coral Gables to Key West, and it was a lot of fun, but I had a lot of time to think about things. And I was amazed, the organization and how well-run, it was like taking this infantry and moving it, a hundred and sixty-five, like the first aid, everything. It was just really cruel and enthusiasm, so it was nice to be in that space. But it also made me reflect on the tour to Franklin and how well-run that is. And that is a really valuable asset to the community. And I just want to compliment the people, you know, the gentleman was just up here speaking about all the things they do, but they also do things well. And one of them is the Franklin Food Bank, truck Franklin.
Good evening. Ahmad Alwaz, twelve Garrison Jive, Franklin Park. I've been a resident of Franklin for twenty, growing up in central Jersey, work in Somerset County. I'm here to, you know, to talk about, and already asked it, passing this panel, this issue of resolution regarding ceasefire, and just essentially respecting the humanity of all peoples on the Israeli side, on the Palestinian side, Arab, Muslim, Christian. As you can see, I wear a kafiyah. I've been wearing it even before some of the events have happened. My grandparents are Palestinian, and my parents were born in Egypt. I was born here. One of the reasons why I felt it was important to ask is because it's important for our leaders to reflect the mood, the culture, the temperature of the township and the diversity of the township. It's one of the reasons why I've appreciated and continue to live in this township is even just looking at this panel, the diversity and respect for that diversity in Franklin Township. The reason why it's important for our leaders to make those kinds of statements that reflect a broader perspective instead of just one perspective is because people take cues from our leaders. As was mentioned earlier, there was an incident in Chicago with a six-year-old boy. One of, one of the beliefs is that some people felt emboldened to take action against a Palestinian boy, six years old, and his mother, primarily because in Chicago, they did pass a resolution that seemed to be a little bit more one-sided than reflecting a more broader respect for humanity. And as I mentioned, one of the things I've respected about Franklin Township is the respect it has for all the members of its, of its community. As someone who also has a, has a son who's first year at Rutgers, and who also wears a kafiyah when he's there, I, I obviously have been more concerned about the temperature, you know, at our campuses. And again, that primarily is driven by those who have a, have an ability to speak publicly or represent a community. Their words matter. And it's, it's concerning, you know, having to make sure and talk with my son to be careful just because of how he looks or what he's wearing, much like it would be a concern for someone from the Jewish community, male or female, wearing something that would make them identifiable and subjected to hate, discrimination, and harassment, or from the Christian community, or from the Sikh community. Again, I just want to reemphasize that it's important for our, our leaders, our community to stand with peace, with safety, support, empathy for, for the members of its community, and urge you to pass a resolution to that effect.
Mr. Cohen, I didn't realize there's another resolution on the table.
No, I'm sorry. You're only allowed to speak once. Sorry.
Good evening. Bernadette Mar, four Norris Road here in Somerset, New Jersey. Thank you for presenting the resolution at your last meeting, and I hope this evening that you will vote on it, passing the bill, Assembly Bill four five three six and Senate Bill S three oh four. I definitely think that it would help healthcare. And as a parent of a healthcare worker, I hear on a daily basis the challenges that they face, and it's just incredible. And I think it's important for the nurses' health as well as our health that you pass this resolution. Thank you.
Michael Hampton, three nineteen Union Drive, Somerset. I listened tonight to a couple people that were talking about potentially, you know, the construction of a commission or some sort of group to interfaith and look at things. And I want to bring up something I talked about since the summer, which is, we have to modernize as a town. We have things in place like the Interfaith Council. We just, you know, Dr. Karazi was just elected to the council. He's the president of that. But like, it's as if, and it's not on any, you know, individual or any individual council member, the mayor, whatever, it's not on any citizens for not knowing these things. But we have to do a better way of making these things easier to get access to. Also, my question for the council, for these commissions, do we actively seek people to join these commissions who are different than the folks who have been on them forever? I don't want to call anybody out by name, but there is an individual who currently sits on like five commissions in town. That's outrageous to me. Like, it just doesn't make sense. We're a town of sixty-five thousand people. The head of our zoning board is also on the planning board, and like, that gives one individual a lot of power. It was also brought to my attention from speaking to the township clerk last week. We don't run background checks or verify addresses for anyone that sits on these commissions. Now, if that's incorrect, I would love for somebody to tell me that's the case, but if our municipal clerk says that that is to be the truth, and that's what I believe, that's a frightening scenario to me, because one of the main laws is that you have to be a resident of Franklin. And if we're just taking people's words for it, that seems silly. My second thing is, what, if anybody can speak to, what credentials do you look for for cer, to put people on certain boards? We have the humanitarian council. What are the credentials of the members that sit on that board? And how do people that want to sit on that board, that maybe have issues from different communities and different backgrounds that some of us are familiar with, or live in parts of town that aren't served on a lot of these commissions? Is that things that we take into consideration? Some of you represent individual wards. My question to those of you that do, not the two council folks at large, how many people from your wards currently sit on a commission? If you don't know the answer to that, let's come back in two weeks and have the answer to it. I'm very curious. There's five wards. And if it comes to find out, for instance, that the Agricultural Society or Open Space, if it's everybody that lives on one part of South Middle Bush Road and it's nobody else for the rest of the town, that's a problem. Diversity isn't just about gender and race or religion, it's also about location. And I feel like a lot of the issues that we have in town are proximity-based. And because we aren't aware of these things, and that's because we don't have enough of that particular type of diversity on a lot of these commissions and these councils, because, you know, looking at the media, we get caught up in the big hot topic issues of race and gender and equality like that. But my question is, how many people represent, you know, how many ward three people are there? No offense, I've never even met my councilman. And I live in one of the oldest community areas off of DeMott, never even seen him walk around. walk around. So I can't be the only person that feels this way. And the fact that I know the answers to some of the questions that people have just tells me, we're not doing a good enough job of getting that information out and just saying, "Oh, we put it on the website." That's lazy. It's just, it is. It's lazy. None of you, if, oh, you are parents, you wouldn't accept that from your child if you said, "Did you do your homework?" Sure. Yep, I looked at it. Like, no, you would follow up and, you know, look at certain things. So I think just by saying, "Oh, we put it on the website," or, "Oh, someone's expiration date," but how about you talk about, "Here's some of the qualities we're looking for. Here's, you know, the deadline to apply before the next term starts." You guys are about to look at a resolution about open space. Seven of the 13 members expire at the end of the year. Maybe you should table it until we have the newest form together and see what those people think. And 50% of the commission could potentially change in two months, and we're about to spend a quarter of a million dollars when I was ostracized by this side of the council a couple of months ago about how we don't have any money in the town or things are expensive. We got a quarter of a million dollars. It's coming straight from taxpayers' money. So my thing is just, like, little things. And support the nurses, because everyone seems to, but somehow I have a feeling politicians are going to screw this up in the state again, but support the nurses.
Hi, my name's Tom Rooney. I'm from Jefferson Road in Princeton, New Jersey. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've worked at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital for 35 years. Twice a day, I drive through Franklin Township on my way to work and my way home again. Probably looked after thousands of children from the Franklin Township area over the years. Just wanted to describe just a couple of issues that would sort of bring a lot of what's going on at Robert Wood Johnson sort of to the forefront. The unit my wife works in is probably the most intensive care unit in the hospital. They do all the open-heart surgery. They have people on all sorts of heart pumps, very, very complicated stuff, ECMO, things like that. If you have to, you think about an airline pilot, and that's basically what these nurses are doing. They've lost at least 23 nurses who resigned. They're not coming back. How much it costs to train one of those nurses? Probably $200,000 just to get them up and running. And this hospital has let them just take a walk, go anywhere, go to Hackensack, go to, you know, Princeton, wherever. The other issue I want to bring up, have a listen to the young gentleman from the food bank, him begging, you know, for, you know, help. Robert Wood Johnson has spent $120 million to bring strangers in to look after people in this area. $120 million. That's just on nurses. That's not on security. That's not on their massive propaganda campaign through the media. And this poor man here is looking for food bank donations. It's an absolute disgrace. But thank you for putting the resolution on there. I hope you all support it. Thank you.
Dina Lux, 51 Patriots Way in Somerset. I was listening to a lot of these people that are sitting here and talked about a resolution asking for a ceasefire. I don't know how I'm going to say this. I'm emotional about it, because I'm of the Jewish faith, and I hear my friends here who are of the Muslim faith. I think that it's a very complex issue, what's going on. And yes, there have been thousands and thousands of lives lost in this war. But I don't know if it's the council's responsibility to ask for a ceasefire, because there are different sides of this issue. It's so complex. This is a, this has been going on for thousands of years, this battle in the Middle East. And while it broke my heart when I heard from Sammy that so many of his family members were killed, but Hamas still is calling for the destruction of Israel. And I was just there a few years ago in Israel visiting. It's a very beautiful country, and the last thing I would want is for Israel to be wiped off the map. And I just think that before you pass any resolution, there are other possibilities that you can think about rather than calling for a ceasefire. Perhaps something a little bit more benign, a little more, you know, one of harmony and unity for the town that will still send the message that, you know, we need as community members to stand together against hate. But as far as a ceasefire, I'm not 100% sure that I would feel really strongly about doing, having you do something like that in a resolution. So just wanted to tell you my perspective. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening. Linda Powell, 22 Buffett Drive. I know you haven't seen me here a lot in the last couple of years, and most of you know me as a person who cares about the environment and public health, but I think a lot of you don't know that I've been a healthcare worker locally for the past 45 years. And I've also been a patient at the hospital that I did work at for 16 years, which is now part of also the St. Barnabas Conglomerate. And I'm here tonight to support the courageous, striking nurses. If any of you have been lucky enough to not have been in a hospital or in an ER, you may not understand that the nurses are the backbone of our healthcare system and how important it is for good patient care. And the doctors know this. The doctors know that the nurses have to look over their shoulders. The doctors maybe have five minutes with a patient when they see them, and maybe five minutes to write their notes and 10 minutes to read consults and get up and down the elevators. But the nurses have to check all this and make sure it's done properly and make sure there's no mistakes. That's just one little aspect of what the nurses have to do. I've known many nurses. I'm not a nurse myself, but I've known many nurses in my 45 years here, and I know how important it is. And this strike has probably gone on about 110 days longer than it should have. And as far as I know, from seeing some of the articles in the paper, Robert Wood Johnson has probably spent a lot more money trying to defeat this strike than they would spend if they gave into what the nurses' demands are. And we need better healthcare in this country. It's a shame that we don't have better healthcare, and it's too much of a business, too much concern with profit and not enough with caring. And that's why I say that, you know, I'm glad that you're hoping that you will support this legislation to at least get, you know, a decent patient nurse ratio, which is exceedingly important in the healthcare of all of us. The other thing I wanted to say in terms of peace and bigotry and injustice is that, you know, we're in a really scary time. You know, we live in a community where it's usually, you know, we all talk about how we like being here because we're such a diverse community and we all get along so well. But we've also had a past president who's planning on running again, and he has propagated a whole awe of being okay to be prejudiced, okay to mock other people, okay to fight. And we really have to fight against that and stand together and stand for peace and justice and unity and equity. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Assemblyman?
I am Tasneen Shamim, 273 Bennett Lane. Been here for the last 38 years in this home, but went to Red Cross, Robert Wood Johnson, and I'm an ophthalmologist in this area. So this was important to me for both the issues. I feel the nurses should be supported. I have a lot of nurses from Robert Wood Johnson, and some of them have resigned and gone to the other systems, and the others are just in between. And they said that they have a problem. Some of the nurses are in chemotherapy, cannot even get the Medicare benefits with that. And so it's a big problem for them, and I think they should resolve this issue. But the other thing, which is also very upsetting, is as a Muslim in Somerset, it is very, very sad to see what is happening in Palestine. I have a Jewish person and a Palestinian person working in my office, and luckily, we do get along well with each other, but we think all lives are equal, not, I don't think a Jewish life is more important than a Palestinian's life. And the 15,000 people that are killed is something very, very uncalled for. I think they should go against the Hamas. But as Sammy said, in a school shooting, you cannot kill the whole school, even if one of the students did the violence or if one of the teachers did the violence. You have to find out the person who did it, not the rest of those children. And so I really feel that there should be a permanent ceasefire for this Palestinian issue. It's so emotional that it's hard for me to speak. I'm sorry. But I think until there are two straight solutions with fairness and equal rights for all, it cannot stay, because in South Africa, people have struggled for so long, and everywhere, wherever there is a difference in one life versus the other, this problem exists.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? See, no one else come forward on motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Second.
Within a second and a half, in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion is carried. Public portion is closed. Next item is 6.5. That's the nursing resolution. L, it's on your agenda, is 15L. Support Assembly Bill A4536, Senate Bill S304 to establish minimum registration nursing professional nurses staffing standards. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'm moved.
Within a second. Any discussion? So my brief discussion is, I am in support of this. I did a lot of research on it. I read the, there's two meta-studies on what the ratio should be, one in 2016, one in 2019, I believe. And they're certainly in support of ratios. It's not clear the exact ratio that one needs or is optimal, and there was a wide variance in the reported outcomes of it, meaning that, big surprise, there's more to it than nursing. Well, of course. So if the bill were to change the ratios or if they were to make it so that the Health Department was in charge of the ratios, I would be in acceptance of that. But this starts the discussion, and it gets it moving in the right direction, so I certainly am in favor of it, even if the bills aren't perfect. They can go for perfection later. Anyone else have an opinion?
I just want to thank all the nurses for everything you do every day. Encourage anyone to have a medical emergency right now, because you're well-protected in the room, but I don't want you to have that either. And I appreciate the council taking this up, and again, thank you for helping save our lives and keep our community safe. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Madam Clerk. May I just... Madam Mayor. All right. Thank you.
Into the wire.
A happy wife, happy life. My wife is a nurse. And she worked at Robert Wood Johnson, as I said last time, and she worked at the surgical oncology department, Tower 5. Is it still there? I'm not sure. Anyway, she had sort of a terrible experience, similar issues many, many years ago when she was active. And she quit, and she never went back. I think that goes to one of the state's standards. I think if you encourage more optimal working conditions for nurses, I think there would be more in the workforce, which we need everywhere. And I wholeheartedly submit, support the resolution, and thank you for all your service.
I don't know. Sounds like a conflict of interest.
No conflict.
Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor, I'm Morrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Madam Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ijaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hurdine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasinella.
Yes.
Councilwoman White.
It passes. It would be acceptable if the nurses wished to leave now. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Don't have a medical emergency now.
The last people out, since people tend to gather in the lobby, the last people out could close those doors. That would be great. Escort the assemblymen out would be better. Okay, there were two legal-ish questions, a review of the lawsuits and Ms., I don't know if she was asking a legal question, but it's a legal answer to Ms. Singh.
So, Mr. Mayor, the lawsuits are still pending. The discovery data has been extended until, I think, the beginning of February. We really don't have any new news. There's been no substantial proceedings on them, other than the fact that there have been, there's another new lawsuit that was filed by B9, and that is challenging the effective date section of the stormwater regulations. I do not know, and Bob might know better than I do, because I don't represent the planning board, whether or not there has been a lawsuit filed challenging the denial of the application.
There is not.
There is not.
As of yet.
So, you know, I can't, I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't have any exact number off the top of my head. It's probably in the neighborhood of about 12 related lawsuits. Most of them have been combined by the court to the extent that they challenged one of the two ordinances that affect the warehouse zone, the one that established buffers, and the second that made warehousing a prohibited use in those zones. They've all been consolidated by the judge, by the Superior Court, and the court has assigned two special masters, Judge, retired Judge O'Neill and retired Judge Miller, to kind of shepherd them through the system. Mostly, they'll be probably discovery masters and then go from there, but I really don't have anything new to report. On the second matter, I have kind of a small familiarity with the issue, and I just want to point out to council that I have been told, at least as of late this afternoon, that this is still an open criminal investigation, and it involves minors. So I would just suggest to the council that, first, council doesn't really have a role in criminal matters that they can't weigh in on one side or the other with regards to our police department. And secondly, of course, you know, these are the kind of items that we try to not comment upon because it's, while it's going through the criminal justice system. Well, I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll save the elephant in the room for a little bit later, the health and wellness issue.
So the answer to that is that, in fairness to the two women who worked very hard over the last year to put together that, did that study and put together that report specifically to have it presented to this governing body as it's for the municipality, it will not be released, and we can all just have to be patient for another two weeks. One of the major, the people who held the major role in that study unfortunately is ill and is out of work and will return hopefully by the end of this week, beginning of next week, and she'll be in a position to make that presentation to council, and then it'll be made public and made available to all of the respective commissions and committees as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kornell, later, I'll let Mr. Bornlocker answer about Easton Ave. I once tried to look at the tax benefits of the warehouses. You have to make a bunch of assumptions, but I'll take another stab at it and just outline the assumptions I've made. It's a valid question, it's just, the answer may not be valid. Mr. Bornlocker will comment later on the traffic study, and?
And open space.
Open space criteria, right. Okay, I guess I'll go for the elephant in the room. So, when I took this oath to sit here, I thought about the role of mayor, especially in our form of government, and the role of a councilperson. And I often think about, do you go with your conscience, or do you go with what the public wants you to do? These are all difficult decisions. One thing I've, I thought was very important about government, is that you stay in your own lane, that you don't try to expand your role. One of the debate questions was, do you think we should go to a strong mayor system, basically where the mayor has more power? And I personally would be the person most likely at that time to benefit from that, if power is a benefit, not sure it is. And I said no, because the collaborative, I think the collaborative council is better than a more powerful mayor. So, I take my role in government extremely seriously, and I don't want to expand what I'm supposed to be, or what, and extend that to council, what council's supposed to be. I don't think when people were picking me, they were trying to figure out what my opinion would be on silk prices in Botswana, or the issues of Bangladesh. I think that's out of my lane. And I have many strong feelings about what's going on in the Middle East. But it's, as Ms. Lux said, it's complicated, it's very complicated. And I would hate for me to give an opinion that angers one group, and some gentleman pointed it out, that angers one group because I was too strong, or too weak in what I said, or took a side, and didn't consider their opinion, and that led to violence. But I cared about, or even just hate, what I care about is Franklin. And what I ask of Franklin is to respect each other, listen to each other, to understand that both sides, I shouldn't say both sides, all sides, because there's more than one than two sides, all sides are hurting, all sides are in pain. My heart goes out to Sammy and his family, my heart goes out to many people in Franklin, building bridges, stopping hate speech, interfaith dialogue, stand against hate, witnessing the rise of anger, those were some great words that were spoken here. So, I want, if I'm going to pass a resolution, the resolution would be about that Franklin people need to, as they have done countless times, respect one another, and keep peace in Franklin. But I'm, I just think it is out of my lane to advise a nation, or a state, or whatever you want to call it, what to do. And as I said, I take my role as mayor very, very seriously, and I do not think it is my, within my lane to make such a judgment. Anyone else want to address any issues before I turn it over to Mr. Bornlocker?
Mayor, I would like to address.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, community members, for speaking out tonight and sharing your emotions, thoughts, feelings, and requests. First, I would like to give my deepest condolences for Sammy Shabon and his family. It was in four generations. I don't think I can say anything to make it easy, but I've been praying, and my thoughts are with them. And to all the community members, that is mourning loss of a loved one. The tangible front represents a diverse community, with residents from numerous races, ethnicities, and religious groups. In fact, we are the second most diverse community in the state of New Jersey. Because of the recent events in the Middle East, there has been an increase in antisemitic and Islamophobic incidents across the United States, including, what I've recently learned, a local house of worship, which receives some hate messages, which is still under investigation. I want to assure you that this council is committed to support peaceful coexistence among the diverse community members, and rejects any kind of hate bigotry. And in fact, our township is our first township in the nation that many of its citizens, including all of its school students, took the pledge, "Stand up for the other" pledge. And I'll read it, which states, "While interacting with members of my own faith, or ethnic, or gender community, or with others, if I hear hateful comments from anyone, from members of any other community, I pledge to stand up for the other, and speak up to challenge bigotry in any form." And closed. And I wish to remind the community members about the pledge, and request every member of our community to take the stand up for the other pledge. I would also like to note that this township council has zero tolerance for any form of hate, bigotry, and discrimination of any kind against any race, religion, nationality, ethnicity, gender, oppressions, and is committed to uniting the Franklin community and ensuring everyone feels respected and valued. Finally, let me mention that I want hostiles to end as soon as possible. It is heartbreaking to see civilians suffering and dying from both sides. Every life matters, every life is precious. We heard you very clear, we respect your requests. We can further discuss it, and hopefully come up with a resolution in the future. As our Assemblyman Joel Denilson, who's here today, shared on his social media page, we pray for peace and harmony. Franklin is my home, as it is yours. We must strive to be more human and peaceful in everything we do. We must treat each other with respect and compassion. The primary reason we are discussing you here, because we have members of our community affected. I care about each one of you, and we all care about you. We as community care about each other. Please understand that if you are in pain, then we are in pain with you. If you suffer, then I suffer with you. Thank you.
You, councilwoman. Anyone else?
Me.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you. So, I answered to the old man there about the positions on various commissions and boards in town. As you know, it is open to all citizens, and these are all volunteer positions, and we cannot fill them all, despite announcing vacancies in the meetings. And even, we have lots of absentees to these meetings, because it's a volunteer position. We have a number of openings, so I encourage all of us to spread the word, and I myself have gone out and talked to people to join and take an active role. It's a form, some form of governance in the town, so I think the people should volunteer to serve in those positions. And we have, obviously, the form, the leadership, citizen leadership form available at the Clerk's office or on the website. And when we announce vacancies, when there are vacancies, please seek out those positions if you're interested, there are many, many opportunities to serve. I encourage all of my colleagues to go out and spread the word and recruit, to give the opportunity to the people to be part of the governance. That is one. And then, secondly, the big elephant in the room, as mayor would call it, I think, you know, I am a, I'm a person of Indian origin, I'm a Hindu, and look at this council, we have many faiths represented in the council. When I was growing up in India, as a Hindu, as you know, India has got 1.4 billion now, and it's a, it's a second largest, or the third largest country with a Muslim population over 200 million people. And many of you do not, may not know this, and I know you do not know this, India has the oldest synagogue in the Commonwealth of Nations, built in 1568 by Portuguese, Jewish people from Portuguese. So, we have all faiths and, you know, all religions, and lots of different diversity in India. And we grew up with the message and with the principle of tolerance and respect for everyone, your neighbor, your friend, your, your classmate, your coworker, and that is important. And that's a kind of value that we try to practice in this council. We treat and respect everyone in the town, no matter color, creed, or religion. And I hope that we continue to do that, and pray, and support all the people, and we pray for peace and unity and harmony. And I, my heart goes out to all those people that suffer and have experienced loss. And we will do the best we can to get the message out to all of the people, all of the town, and I like the idea of the pledge my colleague talked about, we will certainly do that, and we'll continue the message of unity and peace. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor? You mentioned, I think, well, a little bit about it, but just to clarify, because you got me thinking, Michael, right, when you had asked them questions. I don't know what you meant exactly by background checks, but everybody has to be a Franklin resident, and I'm just curious, do we do anything to verify their address? I mean, we like to think people are going to take them at their word, but just curiously, I don't think that's ever been an issue, is there any?
Oh, councilman, there's, there's a paper that they sign attesting to their address. So, is there a background investigation, as was suggested? No. And going further, this background investigation?
I didn't ask for one, Bob. Can I finish my comments, please? And you can do it when it goes to the manager. Thank you. Yeah, I'm not suggesting or supporting background checks, and I'm not sure what you meant by it, is all I was stating. You do fill out a form, when I meant take a word for it, I'm glad the manager did mention that, because that's true, I did forgot to mention that, that you fill out a form with your address, your email, your all this, and you sign off, I think electronically. And yeah, I appreciate the manager pointing that out, I forgot. But basically, at that point, that's what I meant by, we take them at their word, we get the information. I've never heard of anybody serving or trying to serve that isn't a resident. So, matter of fact, sometimes we get resignations simply because people realize they're leaving, and they'll resign from their position. But I just wanted to address something else, when you mentioned seven positions are up in open space committee. Usually, what council does is, and the clerk does this, we asked her two years ago, matter of fact, before I got on council, the mayor and I were involved with trying to expand the exposure and involvement of civilians in these committees. But people that are on the committee, if they meet the benchmark for attendance, and there's no, I'm going to say, major issue or problem that we've heard of, or that someone's complained about, they'll ask if they want to serve again when their term is up, and it's not a given, it's not a rubber stamp, but often, they will be reappointed. And also, some positions, and open space is a perfect example, they have representatives from environmental commission, representatives from agricultural commission, et cetera, I don't know the exact ones. But those are also open positions on a yearly basis, and what we usually do is take the recommendation of that group, say the environmental commission, to who they'd like to see represent, or I'm on the shade tree, they recommend somebody. So, I just want to put into perspective, and I appreciate you noticing things like that, I do, and I would be questioning them also, but there's very, I'm going to say, plausible and common sense explanation to some of that. I don't want to go into everything you mentioned, but, but the process is very transparent. Can we do more? Sure, it's not an idea to me or anybody up here, we could put a sign perhaps here in November, where the open positions coming up in all the boards and commissions. We're always open to doing more to publicize it. Geographically, sometimes boards would make sense, you know, you have the Hamilton Board, actually, there's some restrictions, you need to live within a certain boundary. So, would I like to see geographic disparity and representation on all these committees and boards? Absolutely. Sometimes, they make sense, an agricultural board commission, I don't think would be that wise to have a lot of people who don't have anything to do or live in near farming. So, but a good, reasonable question. So, if there's a specific idea that you or other people feel we can do to promote, make people aware, but there is a very good process in place, and it is very transparent, and I welcome anybody to get involved, look online, and if you have ideas of how we can make it more publicized or transparent, please. Qualifications, it's not like you have to have degrees or something, we don't want to put that on people, we want anybody and everybody from any background or level of education or interest to be able to get involved. Does it help if you have, somebody has expertise, you know, on the environmental commission has a background in environmental studies? Sure, and we look for that, and we consider it. But again, I think it's a really good process, but we're always looking for ways to make it better. A couple of things about Easton Ave, and you, and just my feelings and hopes for peace in the world, I'll save for council comments. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you want me to answer the questions, Mr. Mayor?
Just one second. Someone did bring up that some community leaders are posting things that are inflammatory. Are you saying you were posting things, you brought it up? Hey, can't, I, I can't, I can't have you talk, but okay, raising your hand was good. Thank you. I would like to know about those, because talking to them, I think, is in my lane. They might be not, they might not care that I'm talking to them, I would understand that, but I think that is within my lane, if it's within Franklin. Mr. Bornlocker?
Okay, so, to answer some questions, there was a question, Kiki asked a question about traffic study status. Kiki, you understand that this is a long project, it is not something, I mean, I just gave an update two weeks ago at the last council meeting, that the data is now being collected. It will be several months before the data is collected and analyzed. There also, it needs to be field visits to various locations to determine if there are any geometric improvements that need to be made as part of the recommendation. So, I would not anticipate for, you know, into the first quarter of 2024, before there's anything of substance to report. And then, once that's done, then the planning study takes off in earnest. So, that's where we're at with the traffic study. There was a question about open space criteria, and in particular, there were some questions and comments about the acquisition on tonight's agenda. One, just for clarification, that is not a fee simple or outright purchase of property that's on the agenda tonight, that's the purchase of the development rights, otherwise known as a farmland preservation. The owner of the property will continue to own the property, the owner is simply selling the development rights to the township. So, the appraised value is determined by licensed appraisers in conformance with green acres, New Jersey Green Acres regulations, as to how they determine what the development rights are versus the value of the entire property. So, that's what's being purchased tonight. The Open Space Advisory Committee, and it is currently, the township planner and the open space land management consultant, Tara Kenyon, excuse me, one second, are currently, as is required, revising the open space component of the master plan. There's an open space master plan that's done every 10 years, it's currently due at the end of 2024, we're working on that now. Part of that process is the identification of targeted properties within Franklin Township that fit the, the needs for open space. that fit the needs for open space, based on a number of different factors. I'm not going to sit here and list all of them, you know, I wouldn't know all of them off the top of my head, to be perfectly honest with you. But also, a big part of properties that are acquired are a willing seller. We have farms that we would like to preserve, but the farm owners are not interested in selling their development rights, because obviously they have value in their land, and that's not something they're willing to give up. So oftentimes, the way that we come about either farmland preservation or acquisition is a property that generally fits some need of the town, whether it's for active recreation or trying to create a buffer around a developed area, or what it might be, and a willing seller. It's not, we don't, we don't take properties by eminent domain, so it requires a willing seller. So that's a big part of what the properties are that are acquired. And I think that, you know, that's kind of how things come to be. In this particular case, as is often the case, the owner approaches the township and says, "I would like to sell my property. Would you be interested in it?" Or, "I would like to sell my development rights. Would you be interested in it?" That, and that in this particular case is actually how this one happened. The owner of the property approached the township and said, "I would like to sell the development rights to this property and preserve it as farmland." That's how it came to be. The Easton Avenue study. So let me just say to everyone, Bill and I have been friends for over 40 years, and we have a give and take relationship, and he likes to give it to me, and I like to give it back to him. So we are friends, and we have been friends for many, many, many years, going back to high school. Bill, the Easton Avenue study, so I have never proclaimed to be an expert, although I will tell you that a Superior Court judge once said I was, and let me testify as one. But I don't want to influence anyone with what my opinions are about what should be done on Easton Avenue to make it safer. I've written reports, I mean, if you wanted to open them, they probably still exist somewhere, about what I thought should be done to Easton Avenue. But this study, which is very, very much a comprehensive one, that will take years to get to the point where the things will be implemented, the survey of residents and the survey of people who drive the corridor every day is very important, a very important component of this study. But I don't think that anyone up here, myself included, should be influencing people and saying, "You should concentrate on these three things or these five things," as far as, you should give your honest opinion in the survey and let the people who are the experts as far as this type of project is concerned kind of read through them and see where this, what the direction should be. So I think that I would leave it up to the people who are offering their opinions, the residents and motorists who drive the corridor. And just for, just for this purpose, World's Fair Drive to the New Brunswick border, it does not include the 287 interchange, because that's not within the jurisdiction of Somerset County. That's within the jurisdiction of the New Jersey Department of Transportation between Davidson Avenue and World's Fair Drive. That's DOT jurisdiction. So this study only goes from World's Fair Drive to the New Brunswick border. That's it, Mr. Mayor. I think I covered all those questions.
Great. Council comments. That's, we'll start with Councilman Patazny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one thing I wanted to just share is, we heard from the Sikh community night, we heard from the Muslim community, we heard from the Jewish community, I'm sure we heard from other faiths, including folks that didn't identify their religion. And, you know, I think each step of the way, all of us understand the fear that you feel in untrying times, and unfortunately, that extends into our home community. And we stand with you against hate and bigotry in any form. And I think that Councilwoman Udine and Deputy Mayor Embarrassan also pointed out that the stand-up for the other pledge, which was promoted by Alex Karazi and their interfaith council, is something that many of us have taken, and not only just made the pledge, but also enacted. And I can tell you, earlier on a call today, when someone was spewing hate towards a particular religion, I stood up for folks outside of my religion against that. And that's something we would continue to encourage others to do. Sometimes when you're the recipient of that hatred, it's hard to defend yourself, because it's very, very challenging, and really for us to look out for each other in every scenario, because you never know when you're going to be the victim of something like that. And unfortunately, too many of us experience that on a daily basis. It's really about respecting each other, but also taking that extra step about standing up when you see something that is not appropriate and going to help divide our community in a negative way. And that's something I think all of us share and comment. And that's really the only thing I wanted to share tonight. I think we had a pretty robust meeting, and I appreciate the almost full capacity attendance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councilperson. Councilman Longichaka.
Yes. I really want to make it clear that I'm in support of our mayor's stand and issue that is troubling in, and I try to find what he's trying to explain, which we really, really need to stay in our lane, because our governance covers Franklin. You know, as much as life is very, very important on both sides, but still, support of life is important. You need to stay with it. I just want to express my feeling that I like what you say, and I believe.
Thank you. Councilwoman Prue.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologies to the public, I was a little bit late. But I did want to acknowledge, and thank you for filling me in on what I missed during public comments. I think since October 7th, I've thought a lot about the situations that are happening overseas. And I think it is a really delicate balance between what the council can do in good faith to exercise their authority. But I will say, all politics is local. So whatever happens elsewhere in the world, there's someone in our community that it impacts, right? And unfortunately, we've seen the very tragic example of it, with members of our communities losing generations of their families. So I do want to call out that we do have a responsibility to acknowledge it. I think there is a little bit of attention, because, you know, what we're able to do doesn't provide the impact that I think the public is hoping that it does. But I think it's also our role to educate where we think our powers stop and where they keep going. And I really do appreciate what Councilwoman Udine said during her comments, that we have a responsibility to represent every single member of this community that we all live in, and we have to acknowledge when you are scared, and we have to acknowledge when you are afraid, and we have to step up and step in to assure you that this is your home and you are safe here. And that is our responsibility. I think it's probably our preeminent responsibility to make sure that you understand that you have a home here and you are safe in your home. So I want you to feel that you are safe in your home, and if, God forbid, there is a moment here in Franklin Township that you do not, you call on us and you hold us accountable, because we will stand with you, because that is our job, and that is what you elected us to do. We spent, I know I spent a lot of time when I first started with our police force, and they have just evolved beyond, I think, our wildest dreams to be a more community-focused police force. They are there to support you and protect you as well. Bias crimes are real, and they are offenses that are punishable by law. So if you are ever in a situation where you are feeling unsafe because of a protected status, you are protected by the law, and I just want to also call that out. Using this opportunity as a segue, I do want to acknowledge that we did lose one of our officers over the holiday weekend. I unfortunately was out of the country and was not able to participate or be there in my capacity as councilwoman. So I want to take this opportunity to express my condolences to Detective Wilson, Greg Wilson's family, as well as the rest of the department. Anytime you lose a brother or sister in arms is very difficult, so I do want to acknowledge that as well. So I think I'm going to wrap up my comments, just to really reiterate that this is your home, and we are going to make sure you feel safe here. Now, how we do that may differ from how you think we should be able to do that, but we're going to do it through our powers, through our responsibilities. And, you know, if you have questions on how you feel like you want to do more, you want to get more engaged, you know, we can always have that conversation as well. But I think I just want to take that opportunity to say that it has been sitting heavy on my heart as well, and I want to acknowledge that. So thank you for indulging me. This is also my second-to-last council meeting, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kimble Francois.
Thank you, Mayor. I support and respect diversity, and I appreciate and love the diversity of Franklin Township. I am also in support of unity, peace, harmony, and equity. We are one race. We are the human race, and we should conduct ourselves as such. And I pray for peace, and I do pray for harmony. And I encourage all people here in Franklin Township to respect and love one another. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vasanella.
Everyone who speaks is making it harder for me to say anything relevant on this subject. I say it out of seriousness and a compliment to most of the words, most of all the words I agree with 100% that I've heard mentioned thus far. So I'm going to just try to, I don't know, put it in my own words. I've called Franklin home for over 60 years. Yeah, makes you feel old. There's always been incidents, but I believe far less, and when I say incidents, I have to do with bigotry or racism or whatever, people not treating other people the way they really should treat them. And that's happened, and it's going to happen again. But I really do believe, it's probably one of the reasons I've decided to stay here, that it happens far less, far less substantial, far less often, than most other towns that are far less diverse than us. And when something does happen, I don't think, maybe there's a few people, but I don't think there's very many people who don't step up, maybe in their own way, personally at home, maybe when they're worshiping wherever they worship, but that don't care and want there to be civility. And bigotry has no place. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't take much thought to understand that. But again, I agree with most of the words that were spoken here, most all of them. And I do believe we need to stay in our lane, but I do believe we need to make people know that, hopefully they know it already, but if we need to mention it again, we'll mention it again, and if we need to mention it again and again, we'll do it again and again. You are safe here, and if something does happen, I have full faith in our police department here, or if it became a Somerset County prosecutor issue, or whatever it is. And we're humans, and there's some bad humans, and people do things, and they do stupid things, and they need to be held accountable. But I don't believe, I believe people are hurting in this town, I believe for good reason, but I don't believe that we have a crisis or a problem here where a lot of people are against a lot of other people. So I may be naive, but I'd like to believe that and feel horrible about the losses anybody's had here for any reason, especially relevant to recent Middle East conflicts. So I just want to leave you with this. I wish, I hope, and I do pray that maybe this holiday season will bring a little bit more of a longer-lasting love and harmony and peace, the more places in this world, because the focus is right now on the Middle East, as of course it should be, but there are a lot of places in this world that a lot of bad stuff goes down, and it really shouldn't. And all we could do is stand up in our way and, again, hope, wish, and pray in our own way that the world becomes a better place. But I'm happy that Franklin is as tolerant and loving towards each other that it is. Real quick, I just want to mention the St. Matthias, there's, it gets a little confusing because there's a meeting on Tuesday, December 5th, and I do ask the manager when I'm finished to correct me if I'm wrong. This is totally related to Easton Avenue, but there's a separate improvement specific to the Demont Lane, Easton Avenue intersection that covers that jug handle and the pathway that a lot of people use in that area, relevant to the strip malls and whatnot. And there's a separate grant that has to do with a project specifically for that that will be Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, between 4:30 and 7:00 at the Franklin Municipal Building, a meeting for people to come, and supposedly there'll be updates on the proposal, the design, and hopefully there'll be some engagement opportunity for questions and answers from the public. That's happening Tuesday, December 5th. You have until, I believe, the 30th to answer your survey on the greater study, the greater study, the million-dollar study that covers, as manager said, from Easton Avenue, from New Brunswick Land and Lane to World's Fair Drive. So that will have some public meetings that will involve the public, I believe, come this spring. It's a separate study team, and please get involved. Like somebody said, I think it was the manager, give feedback, whether you live on it, you walk on it, you commute on the road. If you want to come to the program on Tuesday, December 5th, specific for that area, or the general study overall, come to the meetings, sign up, there's a link to get on email list for the larger study that's going to take place for next year and a half. So just wanted to be clear. Hopefully, all these efforts, and there's some other efforts I'm involved with, with some local residents that are smaller, but shorter-term, more immediate possibilities for some improvements. So there's a lot of effort all around, so a lot of opportunity for public input. I just wanted to mention, it gets confusing, but please stick with it and get involved. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Udine.
No further comments, Mayor. I think I've said my portion through the prior comments.
Thank you. Councilman Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. One to Brother Sammy, all I can say to you is much love in going through your crises as it is. We want to show some love to the brother and his family in their time of distress. Number two, I want to give you the five or maybe six phases of the Thanksgiving Day Parade. When you're in your youth and you're running around in high school and you decide, well, let's go to the parade. So you and your friends, we get together, jump on a train, you go to New York, you run around all day, you're having fun, you're at the parade. Never saw the parade, you're just in New York City. Phase two, you grow up, you get married, and you have children. You have dependents. And whether you do, like a dummy, you take them to the parade in New York City. So you're doing this for a couple of years, and before you know it, it's you and the wife and your three kids. Then it's you and the wife and your three kids and your... Then it's you and the wife and your three kids, and your brother's two kids, and your sister's two kids. Then you realize it's just you, two, two, five, six. Before you know it, after about six years, one adult and about 30 kids, and you don't know who those 30 kids are. But your friends, I mean, your children's friends and your nieces' friends, everyone seems to want to come be part of the crew. Now, here in Somerset, you have to catch the 5:30 train Thanksgiving Day in the morning, 5:30 train, because that's the first one smoking to get to New York in order to catch the parade. Now, you all run down there, you get four o'clock in the morning, you tell the kids, don't feed them, and don't give them nothing to drink after eight o'clock at night. Why? You don't want them to get to New York and have to go to where? To the bathroom. Don't want to hear it. You can feed them once you get to New York, but not on the way to New York. Okay, so that's basically the ground, the ground rules. So for, you know, that amount of time, you really start to say to yourself, Carl, you're a little dummy. You took all these kids over there, across your arm and leg, but you had fun, so you don't let that slide. Fast forward, stage three. You go into stores, and people you don't remember, hey, Mr. Wright, you going to the parade this year? And you're looking at them like, what the hell you got talking about? Ah, you took them to the parade with your kids. Now they're asking you if you are still going to the parade. And now you say to yourself, you're a bunch of dummies. You're going to get hooked, and your kids are going to have you for life doing this thing. So guess what? Everybody comes up and says that to you, and you say, yeah, yeah, I'm seeing you, I'm seeing you. And you never get on the train. Except stage five, you have grandkids. And it's the first thing out their mouth, we want to go to the parade, we want to go to the parade. And you say, so, all right, fine, good, you know, you want to go to Grandpa, no problem, here we go. Don't feed them, don't give them nothing to drink at night because you don't want them going to the bathroom on the way over there. Not a problem. You get psyched up because you lay all your clothes out like you're supposed to do, sneakers, your sweatpants, thermals, your shirt, everything is laid out. My wife comes in and goes, you're ready for the parade, aren't you? And I go, yes, everything's laid out. So what do you do? You're psyched up, you go to bed, and here's the best part about this. It's four o'clock in the morning, the alarm goes off, you jump up, boom, you're ready to go. Fill in your clothes, cover the door up, hey, get the kids ready, we're out of here. Okay, pop, we're going to take care of business. Half hour later, you get a phone call, Dad, the kids don't want to wake up. What are you talking about? You got me sweating the details. I planned the whole trip. I wake up at four o'clock to make sure you're up, to get the kids to the train station for the 5:30 trip to New York. I had half a mind to run around the corner and just ramsack the house, throw them all out the bed because you told them, they actually begged you to go to the parade. They wanted to go. And like a dummy, Grandpa, you wake up at four o'clock. Never start to take them to the parade, you'll pay for it. But just in case, if you want to, it is a hell of a lot of fun to go. I enjoyed it. After all those years of going, I really like going to the parade. So next year, go to the parade. You don't have to be old, you don't have to be young, you don't have to be nothing. Just go to the parade for what the parade is there for. Watch the balloons, watch the bands, drink the hot chocolate that's nasty, eat the food, do whatever, but take a day off of the brain. It's a lot of fun. Trust me, you'll love it. And that's it, Mr. Mayor, and we had a lot of fun, too.
Does anyone want to second the motion? Deputy Mayor.
Stage seven, listen to Carl at the council meeting. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't have a lot to say other than I did attend Detective Greg Wilson's funeral and met his wife and three young girls. She thanked the support that she saw from the township, from all the other offices and the personnel going to the funeral, and I did extend their hand. If she needed anything, she can always reach out to us, very young family, very sad to see them go through the tragedy. So my heart and prayers are with them. Other than that, good news about our first workforce training program that we are conducting at RVCC. That RVCC program at Franklin. We are starting our first 3D printing course on December 1st, 12 o'clock, at the Consular Building. The class is full, by the way. We have 23 registrants in the program. So the class will run. We are getting prepared with the equipment. RVCC is bringing all the printers and the other materials this week before the class, and it will start. So I'll be there to migrate the class on Friday. So stay tuned for the next offering. They are going to repeat the class because of the demand. It won't be free next time. There would be a fee that they would charge. Another course that they are thinking about is drone and operating drones. So that's also in the works next year. So please spread the word and support these programs that we are trying to bring to the community to help the people educate and improve themselves. One last piece of business, our HRC, last meeting of the year, is going to take place on the 13th. We do have a number of, well, a couple of openings that are coming up on that commission. So if anyone is interested, please apply, send a form to Madam Clerk, and we will consider appointing you to the commission. The HRC in the last meeting did pass a motion to adopt the pledge that Dr. Karazi proposed. So that has already been done there. And that's, that's, oh, last word about Food Bank. We heard a lot about the Food Bank and their activities and then their need for support by all of us. And I would highly encourage every one of you to please become an ambassador. They have an ambassador program for as low as $5, $10 a month. Make it a recurring contribution, any amount that you can donate to Food Bank. If you like to know, $100 buys meal or pays enough meals for a family of four for a week. They have tremendous buying power, and they can stretch the dollars that you donate three, four times than what you can buy food from your grocery store and give it to them. So I think they would appreciate a monetary donation than anything else. And one quick story on a recent fundraiser. The Franklin Bike Tour is a fabulous event, and they have other fundraisers. And I recently went to a golf fundraiser that Food Bank had, and I paid $20 for a 50/50 raffle ticket, and I've never won anything in my life before, and I was sure I wasn't going to. But lo and behold, I was the winner, and I received $1,000, my take on the 50/50. And obviously, I didn't feel, I felt it is right to give it back to the Food Bank so that we can feed 10 families for another full week. So thank you for all the work that you do and all the service, the volunteers especially. And I ask everyone in the township to become an ambassador and make a recurring contribution, whatever you can, 5, 10, 100. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for your generosity. These two sad notes are the Franklin political community lost one of its members very recently. Brian Levine's wife, Lori O'Blatt, succumbed to the complications of a stroke she suffered in January. She was a wonderful woman, a kind woman, and you will be missed. And then Greg Wilson, I'll hand it over to Mr. Fornlocker, who knew him better than any of us, could say some words.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, for those of you who have not heard, Detective Greg Wilson, a 24-year veteran of our police department, unfortunately passed away of a cardiac incident at his home on Thanksgiving Eve, Wednesday. 47 years old, leaves behind his wife, who ironically, with all of the nurses here, is a nurse practitioner, and his three daughters. I worked with Greg, obviously, for the 24 years of his career here, you know, 14 of them when I was still in the police department. Greg was the type of guy that everybody liked. He was just a friendly guy who came to work and did his job and did it very well. He was our first emergency services unit officer. He instructed all of our officers on CPR, actually, not even our officers, all of our employees on CPR and first aid, those who are required to have that training. He was a volunteer firefighter, he was a volunteer EMT. I guess that's probably how I found his wife. They, he dedicated everything that he had when he was at work to his job, and then he went home and dedicated everything that he had to his family. Just that kind of honorable person that everyone likes to know and call friend. And I think all of his coworkers are in shock. This was totally unexpected. And everyone is hurting very much in the police department right now. He had a beautiful funeral, but it's still a very, very sad, sad day yesterday. And I think that it will be a long time for his coworkers to get past this. It's, I saw him on Wednesday, walking past my office, and it was just like every other day, smile on his face, said hi, and then I got the call Wednesday night, a very, very sad time for our police department. And I would ask that you keep, not only our police officers, but his poor wife and daughters, who are suffering through unbearable sadness right now. Please keep them in your thoughts. It's a horrible, horrible thing to go through, and to go through it the holiday season is not going to be easy for them. Please think of them. That's what I have to say, Mayor.
Okay, do you have any?
I think that we covered everything else that I might have covered as far as surveys and studies, and really, I think I'd just like to leave it with Detective Wilson tonight.
Thank you. Item number 10, council discussion items, there are none. There are no minutes to approve. Approve of the warrants in the amount of $2,190,050.16 on November 28, 2023 are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
Within second, any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Ani Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Item number 13, public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading. Ordinance 4422-23, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, approving for tax exemption and authorizing execution of financial agreement in connection with, in connection therewith for block 386.07, lot 54.06 in the Township of Franklin with Willands Senior Residence Urban Renewal LO is presented for public hearing. And final adoption, the public hearing has been noticed as required to have a motion for a public hearing.
No move.
Seconded.
Within second, and any discussion? I'm sorry. All in favor of public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item only.
Mayor, seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close public session.
Seconded.
Within second, and all in favor of closing public sessions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion, a motion to adopt?
No moved.
Seconded.
Within second, and any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Ani Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance 4423-23, this is an ordinance, an introduction on first reading, the ordinance to acquire development rights by purchase or condemnation certain lands within the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey for the purpose of farming and preservation of the Township of Franklin pursuant to NJSA 40A, colon, 12 through 13A, known as Horses and Ad Hom LLC Farm located at the block 11.01, lot 46, also known as 98 Copper Mine Road. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, publication, and accordance with law, public hearing, and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Seconded.
Within second, and any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Ani Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4424-23, ordinance number 44-24-23, capital ordinance providing for the acquisition of development rights for the property known as block 11.01, lot 46, Horses and Hay LLC Farm, 98 Copper Mine Road, in and by the Township of Franklin of the County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, appropriating $230,100, therefore, therefrom the Open Space Trust Fund for the Township of Franklin to pay for the costs thereof. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law, and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
No moved.
Seconded.
Within second, and any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Ani Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Item number 15, the consent agenda. Items A through O with the exclusion of L as listed on the consent agenda portion of this meeting are presented to the Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion?
No moved.
Seconded.
Within second, and any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item or discuss an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Ani Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt. Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Resolutions to be voted on separately, there are none, all business, there is none executive session, there is none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No moved.
Seconded.
Within second, and all in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Be well, Franklin.
Good night.